Good afternoon, special meeting of the city, actually special presentations meeting of the city council, the city of Moreno Valley, Moreno Valley Community Services District, City Accessory Agency, Community Redevelopment Agency, Moreno Valley Housing Authority, Moreno Valley Public Financing Authority, and the Board of Library Trustees. The city council does receive a separate stipend for the CSD meetings. This is the special presentations meeting. We only have one special presentations meeting tonight. It's the awareness of the Black History Month. And we have a proclamation that was requested by Councilmember Cabrera. So I'm going to delegate this presentation to Councilmember Cabrera. And I believe, Councilmember, you have something. Okay.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. Want to start this? Welcome to our special presentations here on February 1st. And as Mayor alluded to, we are honoring National Black History Month today, on the first day of February. And as Mayor mentioned, I do have a proclamation that, as you can see here, we have that. And we'll make sure to put it in its rightful place at City Hall. And you know, every February, America observes a very special occasion called Black History Month. This observance serves as a time to remember and celebrate the many amazing accomplishments of exceptional African Americans, and their importance to our country's history, be it in science, politics, law, sports, the arts, entertainment, and any other fields. Black History Month is synonymous with prominent figures such as Martin Luther King Jr., who fought for equal rights during the 1950s and 60s. Harriet Tubman, Rosa Parks, Muhammad Ali, Mae Jemison, the first female African American astronaut to travel to space in 1992. Maya Angelou, George Washington Carver, and Barack Obama, the first ever African American president of the United States in 2008. There are countless other African Americans who have made a profound impact throughout our history. But those are just a few to name here tonight. It is in our best interest as a community of individuals with different cultures, religions, races, and creeds, to live up to their great teachings. Therefore, as those before us have honored this month, let it be proclaimed that the city of Moreno Valley recognizes February as National Black History Month. And the proclamation that I have here reads, whereas the city of Moreno Valley and across the nation recognize February as Black History Month, and whereas the city of Moreno Valley celebrates the many achievements and contributions made by and to African Americans, and whereas the city of Moreno Valley accepts and welcomes the opportunity to battle any type of racism within its diverse population, as well as enhancing the quality of life for African Americans to promote better social and cultural understanding, and further develop a more vibrant community. And whereas the city of Moreno Valley believes Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. showed our nation how to not only be inspired, but that our nation relies in our ability to bridge any gaps between races and cultures. Whereas February 1st, 2022 marks the very important start of Black History Month, the city of Moreno Valley will continue to commemorate and celebrate all of its citizens, past, present, and future, with deserved respect and equality. And whereas the city of Moreno Valley is proud to honor this historic event and keep creating turning points in our community to enhance our civil rights history when citizens fought against discriminatory criminal laws that are now considered unconstitutional. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and city council of the city of Moreno Valley, on behalf of its residents and staff, does hereby recognize the month of February as Black History Month in the city of Moreno Valley. Thank you very much, and I will turn the floor back to Mayor Gutierrez.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember, and thank you for recommending this as well. I think it's very important. So I appreciate that. And we'll go ahead and adjourn our special presentations meeting at this time, and we will start our regular city council meeting at 6:00 PM. Thank you.
All right. Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the joint meeting of the City Council, the City of Moreno Valley, Moreno Valley Communities Services District, City of Successor Agency for the Community Redevelopment Agency, City of Moreno Valley, Moreno Valley Housing Authority, the Board of Library Trustees, and Moreno Valley Public Financing Authority. The City Council does receive a separate stipend for CSD meetings. I now call this regular City Council meeting to order on February 1st, 2022 at 6:00 PM. The pledge of allegiance will be led by the Honorable Councilmember Ed Delgado. Please rise and unmute your microphone as well.
Please stand. Place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Great. Okay. Thank you, Councilmember. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmember Cabrera?
Here.
Councilmember Marquez?
Here.
Councilmember De Nelo?
Here.
Mayor Gutierrez?
Here. Thanks so much, Madam Clerk. Staff introductions, please.
Pat Huckins, not his city clerk.
Stephen Quintanilla, interim city attorney.
Mike Lee, city manager.
Brian Mohan, Assistant City Manager, Chief Financial Officer, City Treasurer.
Ben Kim, Assistant City Manager, Development Services.
Manny Mancha, Community Development Director.
Michael Lloyd, Public Works Director, City Engineer.
Jeremy Bognick, Parks and Community Services Director.
Captain Joan Salisbury, I function as the Chief of Police.
Jesse Park, Fire Chief.
Great. All right. Well, thank you, everyone, for being here tonight. Thank you, staff. We do currently offer Spanish translation services, just to let anybody know. Before we do hear public comments, I do ask that the people making comments or in the audience just be respectful towards each other. And we'll go ahead and just start with items not on the agenda. We do have a public hearing item. This item is on the redistricting, and that's item F2. So if you do want to speak on that item, I do ask that you wait once that item is called, and then you'll be able to speak on that item. But for now, we have public comments on non-agenda items. So, Madam Clerk, how many speakers do we have tonight? I know we have two other hearings as well. And not including the ones on the consent.
We have eight speakers logged in right now.
Okay. All right. Okay, we'll go ahead and call three of them. At a time.
Fred Banuelos, Carrie Thinn, and David Ornelas.
Okay, Fred.
Check.
And we'll do two minutes each, Pat.
Two minutes. All right, here we go. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello, everyone. Councilmember David Marquez, I want to start off with saying I'm sorry for your loss. Matt Chen, I want to say congratulations to you. It appears that you're going to be the new Planning Commissioner. The last council meeting, it appears that the council members did not stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. As I was watching, I stood up and I took my eye off the camera and not sure if everybody stood up. But Councilmember Ed Delgado did reach out to me and told me that he did stand up, so I appreciate that. On Sunday, I rode my bicycle down to Juan Batista de Anza, a multi-use trail, really nice. They got some bridges that are going over the riverbed trail. But my concern on that is that the billboard says, "City of Moreno Valley, roadwork." And I'm concerned, shouldn't it say that it's funded by SB1 funds on that billboard? The other thing that I have a concern about in that riverbed is there's stagnant water, which is not moving, and that's a prime breeding ground for mosquitoes. So I'm wondering if anything can be done before mosquito season hits and can be sprayed, kill the mosquitoes. Now, I like this Zoom meeting thing, but I think we should have the choice to attend in person or do Zoom. City staff and council members are essential, and I believe they need to be at the chambers so I can speak in person. If Governor Gavin Newsom can watch football games without wearing a mask, I should be able to speak at the council meeting in person. And I would like to do this, push this Zoom, because I think more people will be involved. Maybe have a little training class to let people, you know, reach out to your constituents and do a live Zoom meeting so everybody can learn how to do this. And we have the option to whether to come in, like, I want to come into the chambers or do it on Zoom. I think more people will be involved because they don't have to be on camera at the chambers office, and they can just speak and say their piece. Thank you, Moreno Valley first.
Thank you, Fred.
Okay. Bob Palomares?
Hi, Bob. Bob?
Um, I can do Carrie Thinn.
Okay, yeah, we'll come back. Hi, Carrie.
Mayor.
Oh, there he is. Are you there, Bob? Oh, okay. Go ahead, Carrie, and we'll go back to Bob.
Yes, hi. Hello, everyone. The council, I'm so happy to see that we have Councilmember Marquez back on the dais. And we all mourn for the loss of his lovely wife, Velma. I'd like to speak on some issues regarding transparency and making sure that we all understand the potential conflicts of interest that are presented by Councilmember Edward Delgado's employment as both a council member for the City of Moreno Valley and the Riverside County Sheriff's. According to Transparent California, Councilmember Delgado makes $192,950 in the year 2019. His total benefit package totaled $271,820, of which $36,106 was pension debt. Yet, he continues to be present on the dais and not abstain from voting on issues with respect to approving budgetary expenditures with where he is a direct beneficiary of. As well as, as reported on his FPPC Form 700, he owns reportable real property in Moreno Valley zip code 92553. And I again think that if there are agenda items on the, on the, on the council's docket that are present in 92553, that perhaps an evaluation of whether this would add value to his real property and whether or not he should also abstain from voting on these issues as well. The last thing I would like to mention is that I
Did something happen to her audio, Pat?
I think so.
Yeah. Carrie, are you still there? I can give you 15 seconds back. Okay.
Yes, I said at the end that I look forward. Thank you for continuing with these Zoom meetings, and I look forward to all of us being in front of each other when the safety conditions permit. Thank you very much, and have a great night.
Okay, thank you, Carrie. Okay, Bob Palomares, sir? Hi, Bob.
Somebody just gave me a thing to unmute.
Can you hear me?
Uh, yes, yes. And if we can have everyone in the audience, please mute yourselves. That'd be great. Thanks, Bob. Hi, Bob.
How you doing, Mayor? Good evening to all council members. I just heard the comment from Carrie Thinn about the amount of money that Councilman Delgado makes for the work, the job he does. I don't think he gets paid enough for any Riverside County Sheriff for that matter, or fired. These people, their life's on the line every day. So you can't put a price on that. But I hope that, I heard Mr. Banuelos mention about Matthew Chen being on the planning commission. I think that's a, man, that's a great choice. I heard him when they were having the District 2 race at the Lake Club in Sinti Ranch. And, man, he, the guy was really on everything. You know, he's paying attention to what's going on, so he's just a plus for the city if he gets on that planning commission. And I just wanted to say one other thing that I'm glad that police officer that was shot out there in the desert by Palm Springs chasing a suspect is out of the hospital and doing well. And that's what I'm talking about. They just don't get paid enough. So thank you very much for allowing me to speak.
Thanks, Bob.
The next speaker, David Ornelas, followed by Tom Gerald. Mr. Ornelas?
Hello, I am here to monitor the meeting, specifically an item later on the agenda, and have no comments. Thank you very much.
Tom Gerald? Star 620.
Hi, am I transmitting okay?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Tom Gerald, speaking on behalf of myself, and nice to join you. I tried to join the last meeting, but I probably flubbed up on my end, so, but we'll get with the program. First, I'd like to express my truest, deepest condolences to the Marquez family. Very sorry to hear, but the mayor handled it very nicely at the last meeting. And closing the meeting, his wife's honor was very well done. And I just want to express my deepest sympathies to the family and the Councilman Marquez. Couple of things I want to give some kudos to. Got to go to the city concert, the, uh, I think back in, yeah, December, and we had two of our council people were there, and it was a great event. Nice to see that back. It was a wonderful, and I also got to go to the Moreno Valley Corral performance in the same month. And that was another knockout performance. So we got some great local talent here, and I hope we can continue to do those things and groom that wonderful blessing to our community. And I want to welcome Councilman Delgado to the dais, and he's off to a good start. So he's my councilman. We supported him. We're happy to see him proceeding forward. And then finally, I wanted to thank the council for the last meeting. I was hopeful to speak for the portable apartments down on Indian Street. I think it was a good call, and I was glad to see it be a unanimous vote. Developers, local fellow, solid guy. I think he is as good as it gets in the development business. So thank you very much, and Happy New Year.
Robert Thinn, followed by Elmer Thomas and Linda Thomas.
Good evening.
Hello.
Hello, can you hear me all right?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. Once again, I would also like to send my condolences to Dave Marquez and his family for their loss. Hang in there, Dave, and glad to have you back on the City Council. I have a comment about the redistricting. I don't know if that's appropriate right now or for later.
For, go ahead, stop the timer, Pat. We'll give you another 10 seconds, but, yeah, that's for later. Yes.
Okay, well, then, then I just have one non-agenda item that I would like to mention.
Okay.
I have, in the past, asked the same question at numerous city council meetings, and I have yet to get an answer from any city council member. And it's a very easy city, very easy question. Simply, when did it become acceptable for the citizens of Moreno Valley to breathe unhealthy air? When did that become acceptable? And I've asked that numerous times, and I have yet to get a response from any council member. So if there's somebody who would like to step up tonight, I'd love to hear it. Once again, when did it become acceptable for the residents of Moreno Valley to breathe unhealthy air? Thank you.
Elmer Thomas?
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Awesome. Thank you. First of all, I want to thank the mayor for traveling to DC and representing our city, to the President of the United States, Joe Biden, and the First Lady. Thank you. Appreciate that. I also want to congratulate District 1, because they have an excellent candidate in Elena Baca Santa Cruz. Boy, we miss the leadership of Dr. Thornton and Baca right now. Ever since they've been gone, well, you all have seen what's been going on around here. Also want to wish a happy Lunar New Year and Happy Black History Year. I also want to, again, make my call for the recall of Cabrera. You know, you mentioned MLK in your last talk, and I think he would have despised what you did with that whole Jimson fiasco. So please, keep my people out of your mouth, because you, you don't deserve to even breathe the same air as them. You flip-flop in those warehouses when you don't have your partner in crime there pulling your puppet strings, like the last meeting. I encourage the citizens of Moreno Valley to go back and look at that meeting when Cabrera tried to bully the city attorney and have him fired. Look at the malice in his face. Straight-up bully. But yet, when it comes to walking to his car, he had to have his hand held, because he's truly a coward. More interested in photo ops than the citizens of Moreno Valley. We see you now. We see you super clear. And I'm going to make sure every person that endorses you knows who you really are. People need to know where their money is going. And yes, we desperately need leadership in D3. Please, please. Now, my wife can't make it today, so I'm going to go ahead and yield her minutes. Thank you.
Roy Blackard? Mr. Blackard?
Is it working now?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Are we on, before the time starts, are we on non-agenda items?
Yes.
And will we be allowed to talk on A and F items this evening?
Just F items?
Okay.
You can talk on non-agenda items and consent calendar items right now.
Okay, flip the clock.
Thank you.
So here we are with the Zoom meetings. Again, this is a, this is a direct assault on the legacy of Victoria Baca, who fought for our right to speak. On top of that, cutting the time, we're down at the county, and I got three minutes, even though there was more speakers of that. This is a travesty, what's going on. All four of you council members sitting there probably would not be sitting in those seats if it was not for Victoria Baca, one way or the other. And you are sitting there of that, and we're doing these Zoom meetings of that, restricting the right, making it more difficult for the people to redress their government, to practice their free right of political speech. On top of that, we should be able, allowed to comment on the consent calendar items. That is one thing. Another thing, Victoria Baca fought for a long time to get that, and having it buried is absolutely unacceptable. What's going on in our city is a travesty all across the board. I'll call it as I see them on this, but there is unquestionable, across the board, something is very wrong in Moreno Valley. When our governor can sit there and lie to us and tell us to wear masks and do this, put these emergency orders on, and then blatantly not only take pictures, but sit in the seat and walk through the, through the stadium with no mask while he's laughing at you. And we're practicing the same stuff as Melissa Melinda said. People will stop this, and condolences to the Marquez family. It's very difficult to lose loved ones. Thank you.
Next speakers.
Joanne.
Yes, am I on?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am. We can hear you.
See anything coming up since Ed's been sitting on the dais that had to do with law enforcement or anything close to his home or anything like that. So I think she's way out of line. She accused me of taking a $75 bribe on a dinner one time, and I ended up paying it back. It was crazy. She always comes out with that transparency crap, but yet, when everything was going on with Ladonna Jepson, I don't see her screaming transparency or even coming to speak. Once she didn't get elected, she was out. Now she's on these Zoom meetings. And I'm so elated to see Elena Baca Santa Cruz as candidate for District One, because she will be fighting for the rights of the residents, and she knows all the things that have to do with the political arena. She has been schooled since she was a toddler. So anybody up there that says, I didn't know I violated the Brown Act, oh, can I have my vote back? That's not going to happen. So basically, the mayor going to DC was a wonderful thing, and I know that you, Cabrera, you have no business being on the dais, as you clearly demonstrated your willingness to violate the Brown Act. Your outlandish remarks such as, we need to move on, let's go forward. Boy, that's a bunch of hogwash. You will never be mayor, because you're not mayor material. Your actions are the gift that keeps on giving every time you open your mouth. The bottom line is, you have no leadership skills whatsoever, yet alone run this city? I don't think so. I've been here a long time, and I'm not going away, and I'm going to keep hammering that home to all the residents also. And we have a whole bunch of people, not just in our camp, but everywhere else saying the same thing. I hope you have a nice time up there, because I think your time has actually come up. And actually, I did want to say my condolences to you, David, on the loss, because I know what it is to lose such a dear one. But as far as city business, we're going to keep hammering the pavement and getting some of these people off that dais.
Luis Palomares. Luis.
Okay. Luis Palomares.
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, start the clock over, please. Please, okay. Luis Palomares, community activist. I just want to talk about the darn hypocrisy that Kerry Vans came out to say. I mean, they were crickets when they had put the corruption that happened with Donna, I mean, Ladonna. Nobody said anything about them. Nobody came out. Kerry Vans didn't come out. Her husband didn't come out. Lindsay didn't come, nobody came out to say anything about that. But now they're talking about, I mean, they're talking about Delgado? I mean, gee, they're already attacking Delgado, the haters club. They're the haters club. They call people haters. They're the haters. They ain't got no lives. Get a life, please. You know, I can't even, well, it shocked me, it surprised me. Delgado's doing a good job, and we're supporting him. As far as Cabrera, well, Cabrera, my God, you said you were not going to take no money from a developer, but yet, on your 460s, you took in three different money from developers, adding up to $10,000? Wow. And then what happened to the $35,000? We still don't know what happened there on your, on your campaign from 2017. The hypocrisy, I can't even believe you. I can't believe you. And, you know, you're all over the city, photo ops, all, all over the place. Don't you work? You know, you're at the church on Red Limbs, you know, giving, you know, the giveaway over there with the food. That's great, you know, but you got a camera guy, a professional camera guy following you around. Even going to the church and do that, shame on you. Where's your, where's your, wow, you don't have any shame. Now, as far as that, that trail that they're talking about, that was Cabrera's baby. Oh, he loved it to death. Well, go take care of those mosquitoes down there, Cabrera. Go, go take care of that, you know? Go take care of that problem. Take your cameraman down there. So I just want to say I'm glad that Elena's running for the seat, and we're going to get some reputation there. Again, it was a huge loss. Baca and Carla Thornton, that's a huge loss. So hopefully, we get that back in here for us, that kind of reputation. Thank you, Delgado.
Elena Santa Cruz, Baca Santa Cruz.
Again, all.
Good evening, mayor, council, residents of Moreno Valley on Zoom. I'm glad to have this opportunity to speak to you tonight via Zoom. I appreciate the council making it possible for citizens to still participate in government and communicate with their representatives, even though we're in this ongoing pandemic. One of the issues that has plagued our community for some time and now has become glaringly clear is the fact that we have a large tech divide in our community. Without access to high internet speed, high-speed internet and a way to access the internet, the ability to work remotely, to practice distance learning, and even do what we're doing now, communicate with elected officials, is limited or sometimes impossible when we're all trying to stay healthy. So at this time, we're opening up the campaign office. I heard you, Roy, having issues. If anybody else is having issues, please reach out to the campaign. We will make it possible for you to participate. And thanks again to the mayor for ensuring that the citizens can continue to participate in their local government by the Zoom. So I hope to help alleviate any of the accessibility issues. I also want to take a moment to say Happy Chinese New Year. Chinese New Year is based on the lunar year, so it changes every year, but it's about renewal, about getting rid of the old and starting fresh. So I look forward to doing that here in the city. And now, on the first day of Black History Month, I want to bring up Juneteenth. It's a new national holiday designated by President Biden. And so in June, on, this year will be on the 20th, because it falls on a Sunday, we'll have a national holiday. So I'd like to see if we could start the planning now, because I know it takes a lot of time now during Black History Month to start a committee, to get together something so that we could do a Juneteenth celebration, much like the El Grito, which is a celebration of Mexican independence, the Fourth of July, which is American independence, and just as much that we need that Juneteenth celebration so that we can celebrate all of our neighbors. Thank you very much.
No more speakers, mayor, with the others.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, we are now going to move to our joint consent calendar sections A through E on the agenda. All items listed under the consent calendar sections A, B, C, D, and E are considered to be routine and non-controversial and may be enacted by one motion. The motion to adopt the consent calendars is deemed to be a separate motion by each agency and shall be so recorded by the city clerk. I do believe, Councilmember Delgado, you had some comments?
I do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to request that Item A3 on the consent calendar be pulled for a separate vote, since I have not yet received confirmation from the Fair Political Practices Commission regarding whether I have a potential conflict of interest regarding certain budget amendments that may affect the city's public safety contract with the Riverside County Sheriff's Department, which is my employer. Although I know there is a general exception, exemption for public agency employers, since these amendments could potentially affect a contract with my employer, I believe I should recuse myself out of an abundance of caution until I hear otherwise from the FPPC. Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you, council member. And so just for the record, that you will be voting all, all items on the consent calendar, just not A3, because you're recusing yourself on A3? Yeah, okay, correct. All right, okay.
That is my understanding. Thank you.
Yeah, yes, okay. If any council members would like items, if you could please put your hand or just go like this, and then, okay, Councilmember Marquez?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to pull A4 for a comment, and hopefully it's a separate vote.
Okay, so A4 for a comment and a separate vote? Okay.
Yes.
Councilmember Cabrera?
Yeah, so I know we, or Councilmember Delgado already requested to pull Item A3 for a separate vote. I would like to make a comment on A3, also a comment on A4, and a comment on A8.
Okay, so the comment on the A, the A3, we'll just take that when we take the item? Okay, so A4, and you said A8?
A4 and A8.
Okay, A8. And then, before we do that, let me just see, I see a hand from Steve, or maybe that was just my mistake.
That was me. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd just like to point out for the record that since Item A3 is on the consent calendar, Councilmember Delgado does not have to leave the room.
Okay, got it, okay. All right, we'll go with A4. We'll start with Councilmember Cabrera.
Yes, thank you. So Item A4 is mayoral appointment to the planning commission of Mr. Matthew Chen, who I, I've been able to meet with him when he first decided to run for City Council, and I was, I reached out to him just very recently when I saw that he was being nominated to the planning commission. And so although I don't know him very, very well, I do know that he's pretty involved, and just the simple fact that he decided to run for City Council, I mean, us here on the dais know how difficult it is to run a campaign and to even take on that responsibility to, you know, throw your hat into the ring. And so, you know, I do want to commend Mr. Chen for that, and I know he's very involved in different aspects and various organizations and government institutions. So I think, you know, in a nutshell, he would make a great planning commissioner. And, you know, I definitely look forward to, you know, seeing what all he could accomplish here as a planning commissioner and other, in other forms as well. So, you know, I guess I'll just leave my comments at that. Thank you.
Did you want to make your comment, Councilmember, since you were already speaking on A8?
Sure thing. Yeah, A8, and I think this ties in with Item A3 as well, but A8, basically, just so that the public is aware, is an item to, to contract and hire a consulting firm that is in charge of designing all of the road repairs that are going to happen in the city of Moreno Valley, specifically for, I believe this is years 26, 2026 through 2030, if I remember correctly. But I just want to make sure that everybody is aware that this item is on the agenda, and this is a good thing, because staff and us, the City Council, we're trying to get ahead of this as much as we can to prepare, design the roads, get them all ready, so that when it's time to award the contracts, to actually do the construction, we can do that much quicker. And I know that that's a big priority for the council, for the mayor, for the residents, first and foremost, to fix our roads throughout our city. So just wanted to make sure that we highlight this item, because it's going to help us to fix our roads faster.
Absolutely. I see a hand from Councilmember Delgado. Hi.
I hope it's not too late. Can I add a little something to A4?
Oh, yeah, sure.
Okay, so I, I too don't know Matthew Chen very well, but what I do know of him is he's an outstanding citizen of Moreno Valley, and when I did run against him, nothing but respect for the guy. He's a Marine. He currently works at the National Cemetery honoring our veterans. And I've talked to him a couple of times with a couple law enforcement deaths, and the guy is, and that just speaks of his character. So what I would say about his ability to make decisions based on their independence, the projects that he will be presented with, I believe he will be outstanding. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, we also had an item on, okay, so A4, A8. Councilmember Marquez, did you have, I know you mentioned A, I think I listed here A4 for you. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, okay. I was just trying to make sure I wrote it down right.
Yeah, my concern is this. I did introduce myself to Matthew Chen, Chen, when he was running for District Two. The thing about me that caught my attention was when I announced who I was and asked him not to be campaigning on, on city property or city events, he completely ignored me, and he continued to campaign on city property and city events. So that tells me one thing about his character. He's not, he's not listening. He can care less who talks to him. That's my opinion. Secondly, when he was campaigning, he was told not to put any campaign signs on poles that belonged to the city. And what did he do right after that? He continued putting signs up on telephone light posts, again, completely, no regards to who asked him to do this or ask him not to do it. We've had other applicants apply for planning commission that's been in the city for many, many years, that they would make a great, a great planning commissioner. But unfortunately, the council doesn't appoint them, I mean, doesn't nominate them. The mayor does. I understand that. But the mayor can appoint or nominate anyone he wants. And I look at this as one thing. He's, he's a Democrat. He worked for, he was working for Representative Decano. I feel that appointing him, it gives the, the mayor some leverage in his campaigning for a higher office. I mean, come on, this, this guy's never been involved in city functions prior to him running for City Council, and he doesn't listen. So it's kind of, kind of bothers me with putting him on the planning commission. And not only that, his term is up in 325. That's a long time. I had brought it up in the past where they should, we should have term limits for planning commissioners. But that went on deaf ears. So, you know, he might be a nice guy. I don't know him personally, but just my contact with him and seeing how he does things kind of concerns me, though he does. And so I don't think he's a good pick for this. There's other, there's other residents that applied that hasn't even been considered. They've been living here for 20 years. They know about the city, what goes on, what the city needs. Suddenly comes out of the closet and then gets appointed to planning commission because he worked for a representative in Washington, DC, you know, political vision for a certain individual. It doesn't make sense. So that's, that's my comment, and I don't think he would make a good planning commissioner at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, so just so, A3, so A3 is a recusal from Councilmember Delgado. Okay, so just to get that, we're going to vote on the consent calendar, and then, Councilmember Marquez, from what I'm hearing, yours would be a no on, on, on Matthew?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Okay, so Pat, if you could, you know, just register that, and then we'll take a vote of the consent calendar?
Yes, sir.
I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion for to approve.
Okay, so a motion made by Councilmember Marquez to approve the consent calendar with recusal on A3 from Delgado and a no vote on Matthew Chen, a second. This is for the consent calendar.
I'll second it, sir.
Okay, second from Councilmember Delgado. Okay, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir, Councilmember Cabrera.
And, sorry, before we take the vote, can we give? can we give comments on item A three as well? I don't think we had a chance to do that just before we take the vote.
On A three?
Oh, yeah.
I thought we pulled.
Actually, it's going to be for a separate vote.
Yeah, A three is a separate vote. So thank you for bringing that up.
So we'll comment then.
So A three is a separate vote. So let me re-read the motion. So it's a motion to approve the consent calendar with a recusal from councilmember Delgado on item A three, a vote, a no on Matthew Chen, and A three has been pulled as a separate item. Marquez, are you okay with that motion?
Yes, yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
I agree with that, yeah.
Yes, Delgado, you're okay? Okay. All right, Madam Clerk, please call for the vote.
Councilmember Cabrera?
Yes.
Councilmember Marquez?
Yes.
Councilmember Delgado?
Yes.
Mayor Gutierrez?
Yes.
Motion passes for I, now item A three?
Okay, so now we move straight to item A three. So this is a, and just to remind everyone, Delgado is recusing himself on this one. We have fiscal year twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two, first quarter budget review, and approval of the first quarter budget amendments and review of the operating and capital carryovers from fiscal year twenty twenty one, sorry, twenty twenty slash twenty twenty one. We'll have a report from Financial Management Services. Brian, you want to lead us with this?
Yes, thank you, Honorable Mayor, councilmembers. I guess before I give a full presentation on this, it is my understanding that this was pulled for a separate vote predicated on comments from councilmember Cabrera. Is there any specific comments that you have, councilmember Cabrera, or do you want a full presentation of the staff report?
Well, I think it would be good if you go through the staff, the presentation that you already had planned. It'll probably answer some of the questions that I had and some of the items that I wanted to highlight. So I think, you know, just go ahead and go through with your presentation, and then I'll just make a few comments after.
Okay, well, thank you. Honorable Mayor, councilmembers, the item before you tonight is a routine item that is the quarterly budget review. The financial and management services staff pull a bunch of information. We review budget versus actuals, and we compile reports to you. The report tonight, I'd like to highlight a few things as we are making an historic investment in our pavement rehabilitation. So tonight, I'm asking for council to approve fifty million dollars worth of investment in pavement rehabilitation. This is predicated off of your previous approval of the ARPA plan at a previous council meeting that allows the budgetary relief related to that ARPA plan. Also, with some additional sales tax revenues that we're receiving due to the fact that Amazon has restructured their corporate structure. We are now receiving some additional revenues related to their facilities here in our town, which allows us to make an investment in public safety and beautification and quality of life initiatives that we heard from our residents during the Measure G campaign. And these particular investments are a total of five point five million dollars in a new fire squad, police motos, and additional deputies, some clinical behavioral assessment team additions for the police. We're also looking at community enhancement officers along with Public Works Maintenance Team, a Parks and Community Services Maintenance Team, or sorry, a Parks Maintenance Team, and additional Park Ranger. So all of these particular investments that we're making are all related to additional funding that has become available. Obviously, the fifty million dollars in pavement rehabilitation is a one-time funding source. And so we're able to accelerate years one through five and years six through ten that are currently in design. And we'll be going into contract for construction later this year based on council approval and direction. The other portions of this particular item are very routine, so I won't really get into the details of those as you have the entire agenda and items that are attached before you. If you have any questions beyond that, I'm available.
Thank you, Brian, for the brief report. Really appreciate that. Okay, councilmember Cabrera?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Brian, for the presentation. You pretty much hit the nail right on the head. I was going to ask a couple of questions about, you know, different items that are being funded. Thankfully, you know, we were able to free up a significant amount of money in our general fund thanks to ARPA dollars that came in from the federal government, in addition to what you mentioned about Amazon. And so, you know, thank you for, for going over those things. You know, you mentioned the additional, the additional motors for the police department, the additional squad for the fire department, additional park staff, I believe, public work staff as well, which is drastically needed. And, you know, because of COVID, the, the number of employees at City Hall kind of took a hit. And I know that a lot, if not all of our employees at City Hall have been, you know, carrying a heavier load over these past couple of years. There's a lot of work on their plate. And so my, my hope is that the addition of these reinforcements will not only help us to, you know, address all of the needs throughout the city, but it'll also help to alleviate some of that burden on our staff at City Hall. So I think this could be really good, and we're just fortunate to be in this position where we can add, you know, police and fire personnel. So I think all of this is really good in addition to historic investments in our infrastructure, specifically road repairs. And I believe that's upwards of around forty million dollars that we're hoping to put into road repairs over the next year and a half, which is huge. You know, through SB one and, and other funding sources, we typically receive around, I think, four to five million dollars a year to put into our roads, which might sound like a lot of money, but when we're talking about roads, it really doesn't go that far. So comparing what we usually get between four to five million a year to what we're putting in now, over forty million dollars in a year and a half, this is huge. This is the largest investment the city's ever made in its history. And so, you know, over the next year and a half, I just ask our residents to bear with us because there's going to be a lot of construction going on around the city, specifically with our roads. But, you know, it's all going to be well worth it. So I want to commend our staff for making sure that you put us in these positions to maximize our dollars and make the most efficient use of them. So I just wanted to make sure, you know, we highlight some of those items. And I think I'll, I'll leave my comments there. Thank you.
Okay. Councilor Marquez, did you have any comments?
Yeah, real quick, Mayor. I want to reach out and thank my colleagues for, for this, this, this item that hopefully will pass tonight, additional law enforcement. And I had my reservations with Ed when he came aboard about voting on, on certain items for law enforcement. But now I think back and look, you know, Ed, we'll take care of you. We'll get you, we'll get more PD out there for you. So you leave it up to us, we'll take care of you. But I want to thank my colleagues for, for sticking with me on this additional law enforcement, rescue squads, PD, more units, but mainly our roads. You know, we've had some comments made by, by residents saying that, oh, we, we passed this measure, or we got this SB money, or we got this money, why come our roads aren't getting fixed now? Well, unfortunately, even though you vote for something, or we receive so much money, a lot of it comes through grants, and it's not, it's not available to us. It takes up to a year sometimes to, to receive this money. So we, we can't go forward on any type of projects until we have it in the bank. Because you, I don't trust our federal government and our state government to say, oh, we'll give you the money, you go ahead and start something, and we'll send the money to you. So I want the residents to know that this has been in the works for quite a while now. Quite a while, working with the mayor and Cabrera to get these fundings in place. And as soon as we got the money in our hands, we moved forward to it. And staff, I want to say thank you, thank you, thank you for that money for the roads. We're getting it all prepared, getting our consultants out here to design this and that. And we're going to get these done. And we can do it starting now because we do have the money. So again, I want to thank everyone who's involved in, in these projects, and I will continue to do it. Just bear with us. Like I said, we can't take out these problems overnight. It just doesn't happen in government. But we are working on some other projects and, and believe me, we'll, we'll get it done. So be patient with us. And again, thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it.
No worries. Okay. Any, well, we already done public comments. So, Madam Clerk, go ahead, roll call, please. For just the three of us?
Is, is it the same motion and second?
No, it's a motion to approve item A three, entertaining motion to approve item A three. Actually, we'd like to make the motion.
I move.
Okay, moved by councilor Marquez?
I'll second.
Okay, second by councilmember Cabrera?
Okay, councilmember Cabrera?
Yes.
Councilmember Marquez?
Yes.
Mayor Gutierrez?
Yes. Motion carries. All right. Leads us to item F one. We'll bring back councilmember Delgado. All right, great. Okay, so F one has to do with the pollutant discharge elimination mail ballot proceeding. Very routine, non-controversial. We've always done these as well. We'll just have a very brief report from our Financial Management Services Department. Brian?
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, councilmembers. Like you said, this is a very routine item. This particular item is looking to annex Alisando Industrial Number fourteen LP, which is located on the south side of Alisandro Boulevard, west of Heacock Street. As this is a routine item, that will conclude my presentation, but I will be available for any questions.
Thank you, sir. Any council questions to staff on this item?
I have one.
Oh, okay.
Will this affect the, maybe this, Mike Lloyd can answer this, but will this affect that, our, our trail?
Good evening. No, this is to ballot in the private property so that there, the city is collecting stormwater funds to treat water. So this project is incorporated into the overall design of the trail project.
Perfect. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, I'll go ahead and open the hearing. The hearing is now open. Any public testimony I did receive, I think we received one, right, Pat? On F one?
But they're not logged in.
Okay, they're not logged in. Okay. All right, hearing closed. Any deliberation on this item? Okay, I entertain a motion by council to approve staff's recommendation number two, which is to direct the city clerk to go ahead and count the ballots.
Ooh.
Motion made by councilor Marquez. Is that you, Marquez?
Yes.
I'll second it.
Okay, second by councilmember Delgado?
Councilmember Cabrera?
Yes.
Councilmember Marquez?
Yes.
Councilmember Delgado?
Yes.
Mayor Gutierrez?
Yes. And then we'll just pause for a moment while our city clerk counts ballots.
So motion passes for I, and the ballot is yes for Alisandro Industrial, number four.
Okay, great. I entertain a motion by council to approve staff's recommendations, numbers three and four.
I move.
Made by, motion made by councilor Marquez.
I'll second.
Second made by councilmember Cabrera. Madam Clerk, when you're ready, please call for the vote.
Councilmember Cabrera?
Yes.
Councilmember Marquez?
Yes.
Councilmember Delgado?
Yes.
Mayor Gutierrez?
Yes.
Motion passes for I. Thank you.
Thanks so much. Moves us on to item F two, which is the first public hearing regarding the city council redistricting process based on recently released twenty twenty US Census population data for the city of Moreno Valley. We will have a report from our city attorney, and then also a, I believe, the consultant as well.
That's correct. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor of council, before I introduce the city's redistricting team, I'd like to make a couple general comments about the redistricting process. As indicated in the staff report, every ten years, the city has reviewed the boundaries of the, of the council's current districts to determine whether there's a need to adjust them to account for population shifts as reflected in the decennial US Census, the census that's conducted every ten years. Now, the objective of the redistricting process is to ensure that each district has roughly the same population. So by law, the city council will be conducting four public hearings to solicit input from all of your constituents, which includes inviting members of the public to submit maps for the council's consideration. Your constituents are also invited to submit questions and comments on the city's special redistricting website, which is located at redistrictmowout, that's redistrictmowout.org. In fact, before submitting any questions regarding the redistricting process, you may want to advise your constituents to visit the city's redistricting site to see if their questions have already been answered. We've also, we have already populated a number of FAQs on the website. The city will also post on the redistricting website all the public hearing notices, all the agendas, all the staff reports, all the attachments to the staff reports, and any PowerPoint presentations presented public hearings by staff or the consultants. We are going to have a PowerPoint presentation presented tonight, and that will be posted on the city's redistricting website immediately after the public hearing. So I encourage everyone to monitor the website, since it may be populated periodically with additional questions and responses under our FAQ section, and it also may include maps that are submitted by members of the public. In any event, I also want to point out that the redistricting process is not about whether there's a need to revise the number of council members. With respect to the number of council members, that's an issue that's reserved for the voters to decide in the form of a ballot measure. In other words, since the number of council members were decided by the voters in two thousand and fourteen, in order to change that number, to change the number of council members, that can only be accomplished via another ballot measure, which is a separate and distinct issue from the redistricting process. I just wanted to point out that because we've got some comments or emails from residents about that issue. So again, the redistricting process is solely about accommodating any shifts in what I like to describe as the geography of the city's population amongst the current districts. And of course, the outcome of the redistricting process does not preclude the voters from changing the number of council members in the future as a ballot measure. In any event, tonight I have several experts in the field of redistricting, who I was lucky enough to recruit to assist the city through this process. I say lucky because they are perhaps the tops in their field of redistricting in California and in other states. And there is a huge demand for their services throughout the state because lots of cities are rushing to get this, get through this process. So with us this evening, we have Chris Scannell. He's a partner at the law firm Nielsen Merximer. I hope I pronounced that right. Nielsen Merximer has the leading redistricting practice in the state of California. They've represented hundreds of state and local governmental agencies on the redistricting process for the past forty years, including the states of Arizona, New Mexico, and even the Florida State Senate. And just during this current cycle, the firm has represented more than seventy local agencies in California. And to date, no redistricting plan adopted by any public entity that was advised by the firm has ever been successfully challenged in court, which is very good. And also retained to help the process is National Demographics Corporation. They're one of the leading redistricting demographic firms in the nation. And they're the ones that worked with this council in drawing for the current district lines back in two thousand and fourteen. So like Nielsen Merximer, NBC has worked with hundreds of public agencies in drawing and redrawing district lines over the course of forty years. And finally, the city has retained services of Treppeby Smith. And they were retained to assist with the creation of an online redistricting website, the one I just mentioned. And they will be the central, which, that website is going to be our central clearinghouse for all the information regarding our redistricting process, including, again, all the notices, agendas, minutes, draft maps, et cetera. So like the other two firms, Treppeby Smith has a lot of really deep So like the other two firms, Treppeby Smith has a lot of really deep experience in working with public agencies on the redistricting front, having provided outreach and public affairs services to dozens of public agencies. So with that said, Mr. Mayor, I will now turn it over to Chris. Chris?
Thank you, Steve, and thank you, Chris, for the the presentation you're about to give. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Steve. Thank you, members of the city council for having me here this evening. It's a pleasure to be with you and to to talk through the redistricting process. I'm just going to go ahead and dive right in. The the goal of this evening is really to give sort of a an introduction to the process, where we're headed over the next few weeks and how we're going to get there. And also to talk about the rules of how we go about readjusting the boundary lines as Steve Steve has set forth. So if we could go to the first slide, please. I'm going to start off with a little bit of discussion about the process and the timeline, and then we'll dig into the more substantive discussion of, you know, how we go about doing it. So if we could go to the first slide here. So I I want to start with the the timeline. Under state law, some some of you may recall this process from 2014. And, you know, back in 2014, there was a fairly simple process for doing it. The city council had to conduct two hearings and that was it. There were some significant revisions to redistricting laws, state statutes in 2019 and some additional in 2020. And the process is a more in-depth, involved undertaking than it was then. So there are a minimum of at least four public hearings that have to be conducted as part of the redistricting process. And we're, the the goal is to have it all complete by the statutory deadline of April seventeenth, twenty twenty two. And so you'll see here the the deadlines that we've set and the hearing days that we've proposed. We're basically going to have a a hearing every two weeks between now and the middle of March. Tonight, February fifteenth, March first, and then March fifteenth. And the goal being for the council to have heard feedback from the public, to have seen some some proposed versions of maps as a result of that feedback, and then with the goal of adopting that final revised map by March fifteenth. You'll notice that that leaves about a month then before the statutory deadline. We always prefer to build in a little bit of a buffer. First of all, because occasionally there might be a need to have an additional hearing. You know, obviously, that's not the goal, but but we like to have, preserve that option. And also because, you know, in in the event that we are finished by March fifteenth, we'll be doing the registrar's office favor. They'll be getting a lot of these maps from cities throughout the county and they have to implement them all. They have to reassign the voters, they have to get them into the system. It's a big undertaking and so we always work to try and and set it up so that we ease that process for them as well, so that it gets implemented quickly and efficiently. And so two other dates, just to note on this calendar for you, and I'll elaborate on them a little bit in the next slide, but February eighteenth and March second. The the March first and the March fifteenth hearings are the ones that we'll be considering maps. And as part of the process and and part of the statutory amendments from 2019, we're inviting and looking to to receive input from the public, including an option for them to submit maps as proposals. But when they do that, the demographer then takes those proposals from the the system and then it has to process them. And so we have deadlines ahead of each of those two hearings to submit those maps if you then want them to be considered at that that next hearing. So if you want to, if you're submitting a map as a member of the public prior to the March first meeting to be considered that evening, we need to have those maps submitted by the eighteenth. And then March second is the deadline to submit a map for consideration at the March fifteenth hearing. Obviously, that, the goal is for that to be the final adoption. So those are the, that's kind of the the broad timeline. Those are the key dates that we're looking at over the next, next month and a half. If you go to the next slide, please. As I, as I said, and as as Steve mentioned, you know, we are looking for for public feedback on this process. And one way of doing that, that's become sort of standard and and required now by law, is a dedicated redistricting website, which we have set up at RedistrictMoval.org. It, as Steve mentioned, it's a a central clearinghouse for the the process where people can go and submit comments, get information about the timeline, get information about the redistricting process generally, hearing notices, agendas, etc. But that's also then where they'll be going to get information about how to submit maps, how to participate in the process. And so it's set up, it is as a matter of state law required to be maintained for ten years, basically until the next redistricting cycle. So it's going to be an archive once the process is over, also of the process that we go through. If you go to the next slide, please. And as I mentioned, we're expecting or proposing, giving the option for people to submit proposed maps as well. And what the city has done is with the the help of National Demographics, the the demographic consultants, is they have incorporated a link to what's known as Dave's Redistricting App. And it's basically an app that is set up with either a blank version of the current city with no districts, or you can use an option that has the current district maps as the starting point. And it allows you to go in and start re-drawing the maps. And it will automatically calculate all of the populations of those districts as you make changes, including all of the ethnic and racial demographics for voting rights purposes, etc., so that you can make changes and propose them and that it will do the work of calculating whether those districts are complying with the population equality requirements and the other requirements of the process. And then once that that map is is changed or altered to your liking, you can go ahead and then submit the map. And as I mentioned, the demographer will then take it and process it along with all of the other maps. So the council will have all of the maps to consider at its, as public hearings. And we'll also have the same information in connection with each of those maps, so it can compare them on an apples-to-apples basis. Go to the next slide, please. So that's sort of in big picture, the the process that we're going to be following. Now, I want to turn a little bit to a discussion of the rules of the road, how we, you know, what what rules have to be followed in actually drawing the lines. So the way it works in big picture is that federal law sets some major sort of guideposts. And then state law fills in everything between. And the major guideposts for for federal law are the equal population requirement, which is the reason we do this whole thing every ten years, and which we'll talk about a little bit more. And then compliance and and protection of minority voting rights, compliance with the Federal Voting Rights Act. Within those broad outer boundaries, state law sets some specific statutory criteria to be taken into account. And it used to be, you know, if you recall, maybe from the 2014 process, it was a whole lot of discretion in the in the hands of the council at the time. And the council had, you know, made the decision about how to weigh various considerations, what to take into account, etc. The changes that came in 2019 have have narrowed that process a little bit. And so now the legislature has required that there are four specific criteria that have to be taken into account. And they have to be taken into account in a specific order. And they're the ones listed here in this blue box. The first one is contiguity. You know, districts basically have to all be connected and they shouldn't skip and jump from one place to another. Generally not that difficult a rule to comply with, pretty typical. Second, and and this is where a lot of the testimony we'll be looking for is going to come in. The goal is to unify communities of interest, to the extent possible, while complying obviously with the federal criteria and with the contiguity requirement. And we'll talk a little bit about what communities of interest, what that means, because it's it's sort of a squishy concept, if you will. The next most important, after communities of interest, is easily identifiable boundaries. You know, we're looking for major roads, we're looking for railroad tracks, freeways, you know, canals, you name it. Things that people can look at and understand as sort of obvious boundaries for their districts. And then last but not least, compactness of the population. We're, you know, not supposed to bypass one population cluster to go reach a much further population cluster. Although again, to the extent that's necessary to comply with the higher ranked criteria, it may be, may be permissible. And then within the the constraints of those statutory criteria, there have been historically a number of traditional criteria that the courts have recognized as appropriate, including keeping incumbents within their districts, so that they, you know, continue to serve those districts, minimizing the the amount of change that voters are subjected to, so they don't flip from one election cycle to the other. And in some cases, population growth, taking that into account. But with the changes in state law in 2019, those traditional criteria, they're not, it's not impermissible to consider them, but they can only be considered to the extent that it doesn't then interfere with compliance with those those statutory criteria and what they call. So we can move to the next slide. So starting off with the equal population requirement, this is, as again, the most important consideration in the whole process. It's the reason we do it because back in the nineteen sixties, the Supreme Court said that districts have to be roughly equal. So, you know, to to give everybody's, you know, comply with the the one person, one vote requirement. And I say roughly equal, they don't have to be perfectly equal. And what the Supreme Court has said is that if the deviation between the largest and smallest district is within about ten percent, then that's presumptively constitutional, that's presumptively legitimate. If it's over ten percent, then it's presumed to be unconstitutional and impermissible. One just sort of nuance this time around is pursuant to state law, the just, the numbers that we received from the Census Bureau back in August, about six months late, were adjusted by the California statewide database to remove prisoners from where they are incarcerated and to reassign them back to their last known place of of residence. And so we have those adjusted data that we'll be using as required by state law. If we go to the next slide, please. And so the way we we calculate the equality of population is we take the total population of the the city. And I I should say that these numbers here are just illustrative, these are not specific to Moreno Valley. But we take the total population of the the city, we divide by the number of seats. So in this example, five, in Moreno Valley, four. And that gives us what our ideal population is for each seat, what we're looking for as a target. And then we take the largest and the smallest current districts and we figure out the difference between them. And in this example, it's about four thousand people. The largest district is the eighty-four thousand, six hundred and eighty-three, the smallest is the one in green, eighty thousand, five sixty-eight, a difference of about four thousand people. And you divide that by that ideal, and that gives in this case, four point nine seven percent, that's within that ten percent deviation. We go to the next slide, please. So what we have here from National Demographics are the demographics of Moreno Valley's current districts. And you'll see that the most underpopulated district is about, is District One, it's about fifty-one thousand people. And the most overpopulated is District Four, fifty-three thousand, six hundred and thirty. The difference is about twenty, is well, is two thousand, seven hundred and eighty-six, and that gives us a total deviation of about five point three percent. So, you know, as a first cut, we're within that ten percent already, which is a good starting place to be. You know, in past election or redistricting cycles, you might have just stopped right right there, that might have been the end. Now, with the statutory criteria, we still have to go through the the public hearing process. But if the 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 feedback that we get in the testimony bears out that this complies with those other criteria too, keeping your current districts is an option on the table, because you are within that ten percent. Go to the next slide, please. Again, second most important criterion is compliance with federal law, the the Voting Rights Act and protection of minority voting rights. Section two of the Act precludes any sort of electoral process that would dilute racial and and language minority voting rights. That includes all the the traditional racial categories on the census, also includes what are known as language minorities of particular interest in in California and Southern California, Spanish speaking population. And what the the Supreme Court has said is that i- in certain scenarios where it's possible to draw a majority, a district where that group makes up a majority of the citizen voting age population, so that the eligible voters, there may be a requirement to do so. Go to the next slide, please. One caveat is we have to be a little bit careful because while the Voting Rights Act requires that we take race into consideration, the Supreme Court has said, not too much. And so it's a little bit of a balancing act. The the rule is that that race is one factor in the mix, but it isn't supposed to be the predominant consideration. In other words, we we're not just looking at that, it it's got to be a more holistic picture. And so we really want to focus more broadly, again, on those communities of interest and those other traditional criteria as well in drawing the, drawing the lines. We go to the next slide, please. So in terms of Moreno Valley's current districts, it's already the case that two of the four districts have majority Latino citizen voting age population majorities. The other two are close, certainly plurality, substantial pluralities. And it's not likely possible to draw any district where any of the other racial or ethnic categories can reach that fifty percent threshold. So, you know, long story short, I don't anticipate that the Voting Rights Act is going to be much of a problem complying with it. And in fact, I think that the current lines do. But it's something that we'll, we and and the demographers will be keeping a close eye on. So then if we could go to the next slide, please. And again, I mentioned, we discussed briefly the the specific statutory criteria. If we go to the next slide. The one I want to focus on is the the communities of interest. Because as I said, it's a little bit of a squishy concept. State law defines a community of interest as a population that shares common social or economic interests that should be included within a single district for purposes of its effective and fair representation. And so, you know, what does that mean? You know, broadly speaking, we think there are kind of four things to look at. First of all, what is the common social or economic interest? And this can be very broad, or, you know, be any number of things. One of my my favorite examples from ten years ago was doing the the Phoenix City Council. We had some folks who came in and they said, look, we we own some historic brick houses downtown. And how you treat them in the planning process matters to us. And so we think we have a common interest that should be taken into consideration in drawing these council districts. We want, we want to be in one district. And the city council kept them all in one district. Now, in Moreno Valley, it probably isn't going to be historic brick houses necessarily, but that gives you a sense of how broad and how how general this concept can be. It it varies from place to place. And, you know, as that example suggests, we're also then looking for something that has a connection to city policy. You know, if someone's particular interest is state parks, that may be relevant to their, you know, state legislative districts, but it's probably not going to be as relevant and interest to city council districts. The third thing, we're looking for interests that can be geographically described. You know, if we don't, i- i- if you're not talking about a group of people that are in one place, they're just spread out all through the entire city, then that's not something you're, even if they have a common interest, that you're going to be able to draw a district around. And then finally, benefits from being in a single district. You know, this this goes to the the part about effective and fair representation. Occasionally, we will get feedback from a group who feels that they're better served and more effectively represented by being in multiple districts. And so that will be something that we're looking for feedback from you, because you know, certainly know your community, but also from the public. One thing to note is that a community of interest under state law does not include relationships with political parties, incumbent members of the council, or political candidates. If you go to the next slide, please. You know, I already kind of hinted at this with the the Phoenix example, but communities of interest can be any number of very broad things. It can be lifestyle, community character, recreation, it can be economic, you know, common employers, it can be demographics. It can be geography, it could be, you know, maybe you're in a particular planning area. It could be, you know, specific needs to your your part of the city. If you go to the next slide, please. And then finally, I'm not going to walk through all these, this is a lot, but I I wanted you just to have an example. This was from the the two thousand and eleven statewide commission. Again, just gives a an idea of the breadth of what a community of interest is. And so if you go to the next slide. The real goal, particularly of the first and second public hearings, is we're looking for feedback from you on what communities of interest are in the city and anything we should be taking into account in the process. And that's why we're looking for community testimony, that's why these hearings are being held. You know, we can, we can look at maps, we can look at demographic data, etc., but but we're looking primarily for feedback from you. So if we go to the next slide, please. As I mentioned, you know, there are those limited traditional criteria. As I mentioned, you know, there are those limited traditional criteria, you know, minimizing the shifts of voters, avoiding head-to-head contests between incumbents by keeping you all in your current districts. And maybe also taking into consideration other political subdivisions that may overlap the city. Go to the next slide, please. And then I just want to make a few just kind of procedural points, I guess, how this all works in terms of rolling in. The bottom line is it rolls in over two election cycles. You know, all of you have been elected to four-year terms, and you continue to serve the entire four years regardless of what happens to your districts. I see a little bit of nodding. Serve the remainder of the four-year term, current four-year term. But when that term then ends, you run for reelection in the new districts. And so you can only run in the district that you live in at that point. And then, as Steve mentioned, there has been, there have been some questions about the number of seats and whether there's an opportunity to change that. And the bottom line is that that is not an option as a part of this process. It's a step that could only be taken through the ballot and particularly given the tight timing and the fact that we have to get this all done by mid-April, it's not something that can be done here. The voters always retain that right through the ballot, through the ballot box, but it's not, not an option under state law in this scenario. And so with that, I'm happy to answer any questions or, you know, hear any comments.
All right. Thank you so much, Chris, for that presentation, that thorough presentation. Just a friendly reminder to everyone that it's just in regards to readjusting the boundaries based on the shifts of population. You know, not about adding districts or those things, that's only reserved for the voters. So we'll go ahead and have a report, actually, public comments. Madam Clerk, how many speakers do we have tonight?
We have eight listed.
Okay, great. We'll go ahead and have each of them speak, and we'll do three minutes each. And it needs to be on this item, yes?
So you're opening the public comment, right?
Yes.
Okay. First speaker, Carrie Thinn, and then Robert Thinn, and then Tom Gerald.
And this is the first of the four public hearings, just so everyone knows.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great, yes. I do have a question, both for the council as well as the consultants, that's mentioned that while this meeting and this redistricting effort cannot be to redistrict to more council districts, would it be possible for the city council to sponsor a resolution to place a ballot measure for the November election in order to expand to six districts? So that's my first question. And the reason I bring that up is because I just want to point out that when the city was incorporated in the 1980s, our population was somewhere near 60, 65,000. And then in the 1990s, it was somewhere near 120,000. The 2000s was 142, to 2010, 193. And now in 2020, our population has more than tripled since the first incorporation of our city at 208,000 people. And it seems very obvious to me that we started our city with five elected officials. We currently have five elected officials. And it is, it is also important to note that when we went to a directly elected mayor, what happened was then our districts were reduced to four from five. So I would like to ask that question to the consultant and to the council. Would it be possible for the council to move forward with a resolution to expand the districts to six? Because as, as a person that has been out there campaigning across District Two last summer, not only is it a very large district geographically, but the diversity in the east end versus the west end is very evident, as well as the community of interests of groups and the Voting Rights Act has to be considered. There's a large Muslim, a large Asian population in District Two, as well as obviously a large Latino population. So these are things I think the council has to consider as well as the consultants when they're planning to present our maps to the public at the next city council member meeting, excuse me, and also the consideration of the growth of this city from the 1980s of 65,000 people to the present day of 208,000 people, yet we still have the same amount of elected officials. It is very obvious to me that we do need to expand our districts. And the last comment I will make is I applaud council, excuse me, Assemblymember Sabrina Savantes, she, Sabrina Savantes, she is sponsoring a bill where the supervisors will not be able to draw the districts, and I would hope that the next election, council members cannot draw districts either. Thank you very much.
Robert, then, I think he dropped off. So we have Tom Gerald.
Okay. Tom? Hi, Tom.
Good evening, am I transmitting?
Yes.
Very good. Mayor, council members, members of staff and the public, thank you for having to speak on this, and I appreciate it. I think in, in the, how should I say, simple terms, the old adage, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. I'm very impressed with the way our city government has been operating the last several years. We've had, I think, a lot of good progress. I'm very impressed. Now, that being said, I'm not completely opposed to the addition, because originally I was for going to a six council district when we did the redistricting some years ago. And I'm not close-minded about that because the districts are huge. And candidly, some of Ms. Thinn's comments were correct, you know, I think we could do a better job. But my concern with doing it now, it'd become a huge political football. And I'd like to see that done, like I said, at least four years out, if it gets done at all, because as I said, we're coming out of this pandemic. God knows where we'll be, you know, sooner or later, we're going to have some kind of recession. So, you know, we just need time to get back on track, get the Moreno Valley rolling again, and pray that we all be healthy and, you know, our economy will expand, and then we can look at what we call the bells and the whistles. So those are my comments, and thank you for having me let me speak.
Thank you, Tom.
Bob Palomares, followed by Roy Blacker and Joan Stephan. Paul?
Yes.
We can hear you.
Regarding the, okay, regarding the redistricting, that what they want to do there, I would like to see it just the way it is. Like Tom says, you know, if it ain't broke, don't fix it, you know? And I've heard people, you know, suggest about perhaps we need six council districts. What we need is not bigger, but more effective council. You know, and we got Ed in there, he's doing a great job. We've got two lame ducks, District Three and Four. So what do we need, another one? I think we need to leave it just the way it is and just do our job. Because when you've got two council members that are just dishonest, then they're ineffective. You know, let's, let's work on doing our job and forget about the size. Thank you.
Next speaker, Roy.
We are? Yes, sir. The consultant said, "Keeping the current districts is an option, and it is the best option." That map was drawn by a ditch bank Okie native of Edgemont, as the city calls the capital of Moreno Valley in 2014. It accomplished everything in the criteria that I believe is still on the city's website. It's still, even though the criteria was improved, it still matches that. Some people talk, some people walk the walk. You can go back and watch what a mayor did when he saw what was going on and saw how that process goes. That mayor brought this guy right up in front of the council, and I did an impromptu presentation. And you see, even looking into the future, your deviation is within half of what it was. It accomplished, you don't have to do that. People's number one, and I've been through this redistricting just with the county when they did. People's number one concern is they don't want to move districts. The current map does that. I am resubmitting the current map, that should be passed, looking forward because it worked. And that's what you get when you have a government that works. What you don't want to listen to is the provocateurs who come in and want to disrupt that and want to advocate for things for their own personal gain or interest. We should move forward, and those same concerns and all this stuff, it didn't happen. The racial this, no cutting communities and that, it did not happen, it worked exactly as I said it would. We're sitting here today, the school district brought a five district map, basically looking the same thing, they just passed the process. It lasted last month. There's really no need to hire all these consultants and stuff, all you really got to do is hold the hearing, stamp the map, and let's go. That's what, when you listen to people in the community that know what's going on, you have much better government, thank you.
Thank you, Roy, and I do recall, I think 2014, I think you were there, you were one of the presenters, so I appreciate that. Okay, next speakers?
Joan Stephan, followed by Luis Palomares and Elena Baca Santa Cruz.
As usual, there's people out there putting the cart before the horse, as they say. As Roy said, the current redistricting took a lot of work to be done, and he's right on the spot when it comes to these things. And it's ridiculous to even hire these consultants. The same consultant that did it last time is going to do it again, and what's going to happen is going to be rubber stamped again, so we'll be paying double here. And as far as getting more districts, and then we're going to be having the money factor because we're going to have to pay these people that are sitting up there, what we need is people that work efficiently up there, know what they're doing, and are able to handle their district. Because some of these people just aren't really doing their district. Some of them are out there campaigning for themselves, and this redistricting, basically, I think, is just find the way it is. I don't think, we went through this in 2014. She went back to when Moreno Valley was Moreno Valley, geez, I moved here, it was only 30,000 people. But the fact is, in 2014, when we did this, there was a whole heck of a lot more people. And maybe, you know, she's trying to make it seem like it was a lot different in 2014, which it wasn't. So basically, I think that we should just stick with what we got. And as far as, like Roy said, you know, we're going to get another input here, I guess, this is one of four, but I really don't think we should hire anybody until we see exactly what's presented and done here. We've got enough to worry about right now in the city without having to spend dollars on something that basically is working and has been working. So basically, that's what I have to say, and you'll probably hear me again next city council meeting.
Okay, thank you, Joan.
Next speaker, Luis Palomares, and the last speaker is Elena Baca Santa Cruz.
Luis Palomares, community activist.
Hi, Luis.
Yes. I, Roy, I agree with Tom, and I even agree with Bob. We got two lame ducks over there, I wasn't going to go there, but I mean, Marcus gave a big old commercial about, you know, the one they want to put on the commission now, Chen, Matthew? And, you know, I didn't even think he would go there, but I guess he changed him, nothing at all, it's pretty sad.
Keep it to the district.
As far as, I think what we have going on right now is good, and if we got to move a few things around, that's okay too, because we've got too many people wanting, yeah, but not to redistrict the whole lines of the city. It's working for us, it's been working good for quite a few years, and keep it like that. It's not broken, let's not fix it. And you know, Carrie Thinn's giving a big commercial out there about this and that, oh, but she's got it, she's got all the answers, right? She didn't have the answers because she didn't win her election, so maybe she wants another district here so she can put her foot in the door again. Maybe that's, I don't know what her thinking is, but it's good the way, I think we should just keep it like that, and if we got to tweak it a little here and there, that's okay too. And that's my thoughts about the city council and doing this new thing about the districting. And like I said, if it's not broken, fix it, if you got to tweak it a little bit, that's great too. And let's just keep on going forward, thank you.
Last, last speaker, Elena Baca Santa Cruz.
Good evening, once again. My name is Elena Baca Santa Cruz, I'm a resident of District One, and tonight I'm speaking on the redistricting of the city. I would say that we should wait to redistrict until all the seats are, all the residents are represented on that dais. Right now, District One would have no votes, and we obviously can't trust at least two of the council members to make a good decision for us, so I would suggest waiting. Secondly, I would say that we should leave the districts as four. We currently have two representatives at our house, we have the mayor and our city council. And when we think about adding in a new council member, we also got to think about the salary, the health and welfare benefits, the space, and a lot of our residents are dealing with unemployment, food insecurity, home, housing insecurity. There's a lot of things that our residents are dealing with right now, and adding in more costs at City Hall is probably not the top priority. We just tried to pass a bond, and the residents weren't having it. They don't want more taxes, and they don't want to cover another salary. So at this time, I would say that we should wait until there's five votes on the dais to make this decision, and even then, I would say that we should have these four districts, not increase the number of city council. Thank you.
No more speakers?
Public testimony is now closed, and again, this is only the first hearing of four. Okay, so we're going to have three other hearings, and there's going to be an opportunity for the members of the public to weigh in on this as well. And again, there's no action from the council, just council discussion, but we're not taking any action because we have to actually wait until we hear all public testimony with the other three public hearings. But if anybody would like to chime in, you know, feel free. Okay, and if not, you know, I believe, you know, once it gets to the vote, you know, we can actually make some comment, I mean, there'll be opportunities every time anyway. So I do want to say that the next public hearing, though, is scheduled for February 15th. I'm just letting everyone know, February 15th at 6:00 PM, and it's the second of four hearings, so February 15th at 6:00 PM. And I believe that website is live, right, Mike? Is that website live?
Yes, ma'am, it is live.
Okay, it is live, okay, great. Okay. We'll move on to item, we already did A3, so we'll move on to item H, and actually, city council reports. I'll have Councilmember Delgado, if you would like to give your report for the Riverside County Transportation Commission.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. At the January 24th Western Riverside County Programs and Project Committee meeting, the committee approved funding for the I-10 bypass project to construct a parallel route to address emergencies. We approved agreements for a right-of-way acquisition services and approved a change order for the I-15 toll services agreement. These items will go to the next commission meeting for final action, and this concludes my report, thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Delgado. Okay, thank you, Councilmember Delgado. And then I just have a very brief report as well from the JPA, the March Joint Powers Commission that was held on January 26. The commission approved a third amendment to the development agreement with March Healthcare Development with various conditions. We also heard reports from annual audits and which the JPA seems, appears to be very healthy. And we received an update on the JPA's legislative priorities from Washington DC. And that concludes my report on last week's March Joint Powers Commission meetings. We do have a report from Councilmember Marquez for Riverside Transit Agency.
Thank you, Mayor. At the January 27th Board Director Meeting, the board received updates. The ridership has increased 28% for December of 2021, over December of 2020. So it's gone up. The best part of this is the performance. Their performance rating was at 88%, which is good considering the, the COVID, with having the drivers missing work calling in. And they have plenty of buses to keep on schedule. So that's the good part. The board approved an agreement to upgrade 13 buses locations. Now, if any of the residents have a, have a comment or concerns about a bus stop, give me a call. Call City Hall, leave a message. I'll get back with you. And we can discuss if there's any problem with bus stops, shelters, things like that. The free for students will continue until April of 2022 or until the funds are depleted. So if you're going to college, school, be right for free. You don't have to worry about any fares. And with that being said, I conclude my report. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Marquez. All right, we have I two, section I two, which is city manager's report. Hi, Mike.
Hi, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. Members of the city council, just three items tonight. First is I wanted to give my deepest condolences to Councilmember Marquez. I think when he shared with me what he was going through, I think several months ago, it was a very difficult time for him. So for myself, the E team and the employees, my deepest condolences. Second item is I do want to thank the mayor and city council. I think a couple of weeks ago, we were experiencing, experiencing the surge of the Omicron virus. And, and we all spoke about this and, and continued to issue N95s and K95 masks to our seniors. And it was given out at the senior center. So today we've given out close to 10,000 N95 and K95 masks for seniors. It is the highest level of protection and we continue to give out those masks. We are seeing a dip in the surge. So last week was, I think, the peak of the surge for Southern California. So we're now seeing a decrease in the surge. So thank you for, for allowing that to happen. And I think it's very helpful in protecting our seniors. And lastly, third item is that we're gonna have our first community of service for this year. This is gonna be on Saturday, February 12th, from 8:00 to 12:00. Please go to our website to sign in. We are gonna have refreshments in the very beginning with the kickoff in the beginning. And then we're gonna go to two parks. And at the parks, we're afterwards gonna have food and refreshments provided also. So as you know, this is all outdoors. And so please do come and join us and sign up on our website. So thank you very much. That concludes the city manager's report tonight. Thank you.
And Mike, real quick, can you tell us, or can we find out what the link is to sign up?
Sure, it's www.movail/ beautify.
So movail, movail.org or dot gov?
I'm sorry, movail.org/ beautify.
Okay. Somebody asked me today and I said I was gonna find out, so I found out now. Thank you. Okay, this brings us to reports and comments from council members who did not speak earlier. I will put it at five minutes for each closing comment. So we'll start with Councilmember Marquez.
Thank you, Mayor. I won't take, take those whole five minutes. I just want to say it's, when I'm able to attend finally another council meeting. It's been rough. It's been rough. We had, the family had about over a thousand emails, texts, phone calls. And I just want to say this. If I don't get back to you and respond to your texts, it's because the, the support's been overwhelming. And I just want to thank everybody for it. And that's about it. That's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Marquez. We have Councilmember Cabrera.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. When I started this once again, it's good to be back here at our regular council meeting. Just a few closing remarks here. First, I do want to also extend my condolences to my colleague, Councilmember Marquez, and to the entire Marquez family. You know, it's, it's, it's a tough loss, but you know, we're, we're right here with you. So my, my condolences from my family to yours. Second comment, I actually wanted to just extend the opportunity. I'm not sure if you're still in the meeting. I think if you're, if I have the name correctly, it's Elmer Thomas. I know you, you come consistently to the council meetings. And although I've seen you oftentimes, I, I don't think we've ever had the opportunity to actually, you know, have a full-on discussion. And so I just wanted to, you know, offer that opportunity. Because I think, you know, whether we, you know, agree to disagree or we see different policy issues, I think the least we can do is at least have a conversation and talk about the issues in the city and, you know, solutions for those as well. So I want to extend that opportunity. You know, if you're open to it, I would be happy to meet with you and, you know, share some coffee and have a conversation. Also, today, the Riverside County Board of Supervisors recognized a few nonprofit organizations. One of them was Power Speaks Louder, that I have the, the fortune of working very closely with. They, every single week, are giving out food to the community here in Moreno Valley, right outside of Rising Stars Business Academy. And they got some well-deserved recognition today at the Riverside County Board of Supervisors Chamber. So that was really, really nice to see that they received a plaque and they gave them a platform today. So just want to give them some kudos. Last Thursday, the League of California Cities Latino Caucus had our annual new council member reception. So every year, you know, we give the opportunity for newly elected officials to join us and get to know a little bit more about the caucus and to, you know, possibly even become part of the caucus. So we had the pleasure of welcoming to his first meeting also Councilmember Delgado. Thank you for, for joining us. You know, nothing too fancy or anything. Usually, the in-person events are, are a little bit more interactive. But hopefully, you know, you got a little bit out of that. So thank you for, for joining us for that. Also, last Friday, on January 20, actually, I'm getting my dates right. Just recently, we had the, the ribbon cutting and the grand opening for a new restaurant called Billionaire Burger Boys. And I love their story, right? This is why I want to share it, because not only did they have their ribbon cutting and the line was literally out of the door, but their story and where they come from. They actually originate from Compton, which is my hometown. That's where I was raised. And they started off with one brick and mortar restaurant and they now have two food trucks. And they've gone viral and become very popular and well-known on the Food Network for their food trucks. So now they've opened up their second brick and mortar location here in Moreno Valley at the Paris Pavilion, right there next to Cardenas Markets, off of John F. Kennedy and Paris. So if you haven't had a chance to visit them, highly recommend it. And speaking of the Paris Pavilion, their grand opening and ribbon cutting is tentatively scheduled for mid-February. So just keep an eye out for that. And hopefully, you know, the whole council can, can be there so we can welcome in all those businesses at the Paris Pavilion. February 12th is the Community Day of Service, as City Manager Mike Lee mentioned. So we hope to see you there. And then, you know, other than that, just want to make sure that, you know, just wish everyone well. I hope you're staying safe. You know, we're currently, I think, hopefully, at the back end of this current surge with Omicron. But, you know, I guess we can just keep doing the best that we can in terms of wearing our masks and, you know, washing our hands and being as safe as possible. So with that, just want to wish you all well. It's good to be back here again and we'll see you at the next meeting. Have a good night.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Cabrera. We have comments from Councilmember Delgado.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I too, Dave, want to extend my family's condolences to you and, and your family. I know throughout the process, I was reaching out to you and I, I truly prayed for you and prayed for your family. So send our condolences. Last week, I got a call that we had a member in Moreno Valley turning 100 years old. So I called a friend of mine, Daryl Thomas. He's a, a World Series champion Dodger. And Rudy was turning 100 years old and he was a huge Dodger fan his entire life. So I brought Daryl Thomas over there and Daryl brought his rings, his, his 1981 World Series ring. He brought some signed photographs for Rudy. He brought a ball and we presented Rudy with that. And the city gave him a proclamation for turning 100 years old. So it was amazing. I have pictures on my, my Facebook. If you guys want to see those. It was, it was very, very, very touching. And unfortunately, after that, Rudy passed away six days after his 100th birthday. But I tell you, it wasn't a, it was a celebration of his life, I tell you. He, he was, he was surrounded by his family. There was a ton of people there. There was a mariachi band. It was amazing. So God bless you, Rudy. He's with the Lord now. Last week, I did attend the senior, I went to the senior center. I know they were giving away KN95 masks and hand sanitizer. So I went up there to talk to some of the seniors. It was really, really cool. Rudy, the organizer up there was passing them out. He, he took time to give me a tour of the place. I, I, I did go into the pool room and there was a whole league of pool players in there. It was really cool. So they were having a little competition. So that was, that was really cool to see our city taking care of our seniors. And I was very happy to be part of that. Black History Month, I just want to say that how honored I am to be part of the proclamation that Councilmember Cabrera read earlier. Our city is a diverse city and is absolutely appropriate for us to do. As Dr. Martin Luther King said, "The time is always right to do what is right." So this proclamation was the right thing to do and it was, and timing was no better than today to kick off Black History Month. So thank you for that. To respond to a comment earlier, Mr. Thun, Robert Thun, said he, he's asked about, when is pollution acceptable? It's not, sir. That's the absolute bottom line. Pollution is not acceptable. So I, I've raised all three of my children in Moreno Valley. And so I, I, I can relate to wanting clean air in Moreno Valley. So to answer that question, in very simple terms, it's, it's not acceptable. Beautify Movail, I know that you've heard it 100 times already, the past month and tonight. But one of the parks that we're going to be cleaning up is in District Two. So please join us for coffee and donuts in the morning here at City Hall. And then we'll head up to Morrison Park and Gateway Park in District Two. So I'd love to see you guys there and let's make both of those parks amazing looking. And last thing, I'd like to congratulate Matt Chen. I don't really know when he'll start or when he'll be contacting or contacting the city or whatever, but, or the planning commission. But welcome aboard, sir. I'm glad that you're going to get back in this capacity. And last thing I'd like to say is be kind to one another, always, always. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Delgado. I definitely agree about that. Be kind to one another and my condolences as well to, to you, Dave, as well, to your family. I do want to share that today is, you know, the kickoff of Black History Month. I know that we were able to read the proclamation. Thank you for that, Cabrera. And I do want to announce that we do have a Juneteenth event that we will be doing. The Parks and Committee, which is head by Councilmember Delgado and myself. We talked about that today and it's on our list. And we have several other events coming up. So I'm really excited about the Parks Committee that we have and all the great things that are coming along. I'm also excited about the budget amendments as well, especially with the road improvements, putting more officers, more boots on the ground. I think that's very, very important as well. The community cleanup was also spoken about. City manager mentioned that. February 12th, please come out to that. Very, very, very important. You can sign up and I'll repeat it again, movail.org/ beautify. I did have the opportunity, the honor actually, to attend the White House, actually, Washington DC and visit with First Lady Jill Biden and also the President Joe Biden. Only 17 mayors were selected. And it was a great, great honor and opportunity with Mayor Los Angeles, Mayor Long Beach to be there. It was, I was really amazed at the amount of time that they were there with us as just the 17 mayors and just asking us questions about how we're using our funds, how they can actually help. And I did get to really see the President and how he really does want to help American cities. In fact, you know, he told me that he was a council member. That was one of his first roles and, and, and I liked that. So I think that was a really good thing and it really put us on the map as well. We have now contacts with the Director of Intergovernmental Relations. And we submitted, they actually wanted to hear more about some of the programs that we have, like the Homeless to Work and some of the other programs that we have in the city, like the Movail Learns. And they were really, really excited about that. And, you know, and I could just say honestly, the First Lady and the President were really, really very, very nice and generous. It was an amazing experience, something that I'll continue to remember. And it was an honor to represent the city of Moreno Valley in that capacity. I want to, again, just thank all the staff for all of your hard work. You've done such a great, great job. And we'll go ahead and adjourn the meeting tonight at 8:06 PM. Thank you, everyone. Have a great night and stay safe.